This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
She's in training. Trustee Brooks. Trustee Jenkins-Bell. Trustee Franklin. Trustee Bolt. Trustee Lewis. Okay, and here we go.
Our other trustees are in training. They're right there in my office and they'll be out in a second. They're elected officials of entry-level training right now with South Suburbans Mayors and Managers, so they will be joining us in a very few minutes. Are there any clergy here? I'd like to acknowledge any clergy here. No clergy? Trustee Franklin, would you lead us off with a moment of prayer, please?
Right hands. Dear Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to come together in our community, Lord. We're just thankful for another day. Lord, we're thankful for the great things that are going on in our community. And, Lord, we are just asking that you continue to cover our community and bless our community, give our leaders of knowledge, wisdom, and understanding to make the right decisions to move our community forward, Lord. And we just thank you for all the blessings that are forthcoming and looking forward to everything that's in the future for the Village of University Park. Lord, we know that with you, we can accomplish anything. And we will continue to give you all the glory, all the praise, and all the thanks. In Jesus' name we pray, we all say.
Thank you, trustee. We'll pause for a minute because I see our trustees, elected trustees, are on the way to the stage. So how's everybody feeling this morning, on this very, very hot morning?
Blessed and highly favored.
All right, all right, Sister Gannon. There you go. McFadden on the way. This is Karen Lewis, newly-elected trustee for the Village of University Park.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. Would you two gentlemen mind sharing?
No. I'm going to learn the lyrics to these things, so thank you.
Good morning. Just wanted to pay our condolences and to inform the community of the passing of former trustee, former village president, Tom Johnson. He passed away in Vegas in his home. So just wanted to send our condolences to his family and to all those who knew him.
All right, here comes trustee McFadden. If you guys can go back in a few minutes. Okay, here we are. Good morning. As part of my promise to bring transparency and good local government to University Park, I'm glad to welcome you all to our bi-angled town hall meeting. I'd like to introduce some of our village officials here this morning. Please join me in welcoming Village Clerk Dee Jones, trustee Shirley Boulding, trustee Theopulis Brooks, trustee Donzel Franklin, trustee Samia Jenkins, trustee Karen Lewis, trustee Janelle McFadden, and our village manager, Bernice Dean, Mary Baker. I'd also like to recognize any of our other local officials that are here. If any other locals or officials are here, please stand up and be recognized. If not, we'd also like to recognize our library board elected official, Deborah Strow, and our Democratic Committee Woman, Deborah Strow. Thank you. She's around here somewhere, so we want to make sure that no one goes without their acknowledgements this morning. All right, let's go. After two years in office, let me begin by telling you some of the challenges the village board and I have faced and what we see for the future. I am pleased to outline some of the difficult challenges we inherited and how we've progressed in correcting them to move our village forward. As the previous administrations, 3.6 million annual operating deficits accumulated year after year, there left little room for necessary street resurfacing projects and sidewalk repairs, or for cutting down the more than 125 dead trees that line our parkways, or for code enforcement personnel to tackle the more than 200 boarded-up and abandoned homes throughout the village. Aside from the 2019 aqua-water crisis impacting our clean water supply that my staff and I will discuss in more detail, these were just some of the hard facts we were left to deal with from day one. Cityscapes, 70 townhomes were boarded up, Regal Farm was boarded up, Hickok Aquatic Center was boarded up, Pine Lake Structures and Piers were literally falling down. The Town Center complex was 80% vacant, and the beautiful parking lot where you're sitting in right now was left deteriorated and filled with bottles. Craig Park and Palma Park's baseball fields were overrun with weeds and grass to your knees. The basketball courts had no rims and the tennis courts had no nets. All of this happened while annual deficits ballooned and long-term debt skyrocketed without audits or financial accountability in violation of state law. Yes, it's been a long two years, but we're moving forward now in a more positive direction. I'm happy to report that the village board and I have progressed in correcting most of the difficult challenges we inherited, and the village is starting to turn around. I'd like to take up some of these issues in more detail and open up the topics for discussions and questions.
Okay, what I'm doing today, I'm actually going to very briefly just mention some of the projects, and I'm going to specifically allow the village's engineer, Mr. Curtis Whitick, and the CPA from Kasperic, who's our auditors, to come forth to just explain some of the kinds of things. And I'll come back when it's time for Ms. Fain to make her report for legally what has happened. But in the meantime, let me just say, that's some of the projects I'm going to briefly mention, and the Amazon, Regal Farm, Project Cosmos, Project Bear, which ultimately now we can briefly say, which is Carvana.
Excuse me. Rightfully speaking, we're not interested in anything that you say. If we cannot get tangible proof about what are you saying, then we're not interested in your word now.
Excuse me, out of respect, I'm going to continue. So Chief, would you please ask her to cease that here? And so, as I was saying, there were some initial code names that were given to a development, which is Project Cosmos and Project Bear. And the reason why, when we started out, we had to sign what we called NDAs, non-disclosure. Most developers do that because they're in the process of negotiating the purchase of the land. And if they are, in fact, the owners are divulged of that information, it increases the value of the land. So now that they have purchased the land, we're at liberty to say that Carvana has broken ground on the north side of University Parkway, Stunkel Road, west boarded west by Cicero and boarded east by Governor's Highway. We're looking for, Carvana is the only, the only other, Carvana in the state of Illinois is located in Oak Brook, Illinois, if you travel off of 355, or 88, rather, 388. So we're the second one in the state. We're looking at in excess of 350 jobs from that. We have officially opened Amazon as of May 1 of this year. They are full-time persons working inside, but we're still having problems with folk coming to apply. I've asked people to let me know. I send them the link. We've advertised it in the papers. We've put flyers out. We've done everything possible, but most of the folk are not ready to start working yet because of other circumstances that I'll not mention today. But we are looking for more people that are interested in employment with Amazon. When we started out, it was $15 an hour. It's been negotiated. Now they're paying, starting pay is $17.65 an hour. We're hoping that that would solicit and bring some people. The board has been very supportive in this effort. We're looking to bring some people. So that's 850-plus. We have Carvana, 350-plus. There are going to be double shifts all around, so we have a job. As long as you're 18 years and over, you can come make applications. So we're encouraging you, your children, your grandchildren, if they're 18 years or over, please, we'll send them the link. So in addition to that, you all have noticed that there is a traffic light there at Central and Stunkel University Parkway. As you know before, there was a flashing stoplight where there is actually a traffic light there. And that's to help control the traffic that is coming in and going out, north and south, on Central to University Parkway, to allow it to deal with what the state called "traffic mitigation." So that is being done there. To just give you, and I'm only going over a few of them, we are proposing two developments, not proposing, actually, they've gone through the process of being developed with the planning board and the zoning board, the village mayor board of trustees. We have a development that's coming on the northeast corner of Cicero, I mean, University Parkway and Central Avenue, the northeast corner. The developers, Terrico, is actually taking the lead on this project. We're meeting with them. They're looking to bring in six stations for gas. It's a sophisticated truck stop, but it goes beyond. Okay? It's six trucks, it's six aisles for gas. They're going to have a car wash, a mechanic, mechanical office there. They're looking to negotiate at Cracker Barrel. We're working on Cracker Barrel, Jimmy John's, and some other restaurants to go there. They're also wanting a hotel, but as it stands right now, that is not, that is not zoned for a hotel. So we're trying to look at, we're trying to look at a new location, possibly. Where GSU is located, to help increase their, as been discussed, their sports programs and other locations. So we're working with them on that. But that's not only the, another important thing, on the southeast corner, we're looking at another development. Now, mind you, on the northeast corner, Shell Gas Station will be there, among other things that are going on. But on the southeast corner, we have a similar kind of development with the gas station. It had to go through the planning review board for some exemptions. They have started too. So we have the development on the northeast corner, and we have the simultaneous development on the southeast corner. We have the development going on Cicero Avenue, east to Governor's Highway on the north corner, Carvana. We're looking at that. And other companies have, we've been sitting down and negotiating with them until we can get a basis for the board. We're not ready to take it to the board because they are not, in fact, providing the provisions necessary for the folk. Now, there is some confusion as to Carvana coming in and being in a TIF district. It is not in a TIF district. We utilize enterprise zone dollars for that, and they have to go through WILL and Cook Enterprise Zone in order to get the appropriate concessions. Now, in addition to that, and I'm going to stop on this, let me briefly talk about Regal Farm. We were able to get money for Regal Farm, and the engineers will come back and talk about all the other projects. But Regal Farm, we've been actively working on Regal Farm. We've got a new roof. We're in the process of doing the siding on the main building. We're going to do some security lighting there for purposes of that. And we're also doing some, the window replacements. So that's what we're looking there. We also have the paint that we had hoped to use in the past. The village still has it in our possession. We're trying to get some contractors that will scrape and at least paint the others. So also, the engineers will talk about the resubmission of the IDNR and ASLAD grant that we're in fact looking to move forward to. Excuse me, IDNR, Illinois Natural Resources is the ID, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, okay? So, yeah, that's a problem. So we're, we were told that because the grant that was initially submitted was very, very expensive, and it's one of the better grants submitted to IDNR, that we did not have to resubmit a grant. When they opened it up, we then reconfirmed and we can apply. And between Mr. Whitick, Mr. Kasperic, they're going to talk further on that. But we were locked out of state grants because we hadn't done audits. And Mr. Kasperic will talk about that. Well, based on his progress, the village's progress, the staff involvement, we are now in a position, they unlocked the doors. We're good again because we've done multi-year audits, less than two years. We've done four, five audits, and we'll discuss that later. So we've unlocked, we're good again to start making state applications. And just let me say that Amazon, we are truly looking for people to come in and make applications so they can get some of these jobs because we fought to make sure that as many folk from University Park as possible will get these jobs. Now, we're having a very difficult time getting University Park residents to come and apply for those jobs. Again, I ask you to please. Mr. Whitick, Mr. Kasperic, Mr. Whitick is going to talk about other projects dealing with the Old Forge side path and all of those. And then we'll have Mr. Kasperic to come and talk about what has happened.
Good morning. A few notes here. Thank you, Ms. E., Village Manager. Excuse, I am holding, so it doesn't. My name's Curtis Whitick. I'm with the Antero Group, and we were brought on about two years ago to serve as the village's engineers and planners. I just want to say, it's been an honor to work with the mayor and the trustees here, an honor and also very exciting. There has been almost nonstop progress in terms of projects being teed up in the pipeline and moving forward. It's been really exciting to work with the village and provide some support to help move these forward. So I'm going to provide a quick update on just a few of the projects that are in progress right now. Following up on Ms. E.'s update on Regal Farm, as she mentioned, the roof work is complete, and some of the forthcoming improvements include the windows, the lighting enhancements, safety measures, motion sensors, and then new siding and paint. And the fact that the village is now able to apply for state funding, that opens up the possibility to apply for park and ASLAD grants, which are through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. And there may be other grants out there that we could look at for park improvements and other environmental improvements. Old Forge Lane, there is a stormwater drainage issue behind a few residences on Old Forge. Utility markings are, if not already complete, will be marked on Monday, and then construction work is scheduled to begin Tuesday of next week. And it should take about one week for that project to be constructed. Pine Lake Park, beautiful amenity that I don't need to tell anyone here about, and I think it's a, okay, well, for the new residents that might not know about Pine Lake Park, University Park has this hidden gem in Pine Lake. It's a beautiful pond surrounded by forests and trails, and there are some facilities there that have really fallen into disrepair. And Mayor Rudes has really made it a priority to improve the park overall, including the pond, the landscaping, and the facilities. So scheduled to begin in September is a biological survey. So again, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources will come out here to survey the pond and kind of make recommendations regarding restocking and other improvements to improve the ecological health of the pond. So based on those recommendations, the village will be able to stock the pond. And I'm excited to say that Antero Group would be happy to help the village financially in stocking the pond, which should happen in next year because the survey is being done in the fall. Depending on when improvements happen, the stocking will happen next year. Also on Pine Lake Park, IDNR and those two grants I mentioned, Park and ASLAD, are also options for other improvements at Pine Lake. So we are aware that the pond itself needs to be improved. There's perhaps some pond weed and other biological issues. The site around the pond, there might be invasive species, and there's a need for trail work, and the pavilions and other facilities need to be improved. So now that we are off the state's stop payment list, that does open up some more funding and grant opportunities for Pine Lake Park. Moving on now to local roads, another key priority of Mayor Rudes and the trustees has been getting the roads back into a state of good repair. Yep, so what we, what we did, the, the village had funding available to do resurfacing work last year or to start that project. So Farm View was identified based on the condition of the road, the amount of daily traffic, as well as that it's adjacent to Pine Lake. So we wanted to, you know, really freshen up that area and encourage, you know, and hopefully connect improvements on Farm View to future improvements. I'm sorry, I said Pine Lake, Regal Farm. Sorry, excuse me. Farm View adjacent to Regal Farm. So, you know, given those criteria, Farm View was selected for resurfacing. It was also a resurfacing project as opposed to a full reconstruction, which is a much more involved and expensive endeavor. So we are fully aware that Abbott Lane and Amherst Lane are in very bad, very poor pavement condition, and that the underlying infrastructure also needs to be addressed. So we are pending, or we are waiting funding through a few different sources to start the engineering work there because what needs to happen for both Abbott and Amherst is a full reconstruction of the road, not just a matter of stripping the top layer off and resurfacing. So the goal is to start engineering on that this year, and then hopefully tee up reconstruction of those roads, or at least one of the roads, starting early next year. Okay, and those aren't the only road improvements that are in the queue. We have done what's called a pavement condition assessment, where we look and we assess all the roads in the village and rank them in terms of condition. And that's a key criteria that the village uses to prioritize and schedule improvement work. Other criteria include traffic volumes. So roads that are more highly trafficked are generally roads that you want to prioritize for improvement. If they're adjacent or connected to any other economic development or community development opportunities, again, that's part of the reason why Farm View was selected for resurfacing. So we have a list of every road in the village and the rankings for these different criteria, and that is part of what the village uses to make decisions regarding when to do road resurfacing work. And the last project I'll provide an update on is the University Parkway side path. So this will be a new, you know, a side path looks like much what you see just south of here. It's a wide, it's more or less a trail that's wide enough for people to bike and walk on it. And this side path will connect the metro station. It'll run down Governor's Highway, or run south down Governor's Highway, and then west, I should say west, on University Parkway and Stunkel Road. And so this side path will create a connection between that side path that already exists by the Allied Campus. If you notice there, there's like a little trail north of University Parkway. So this will create a connection from that existing side path to the metro station, which will allow people in the future to get off at the metro station and then commute, walk or bike or scooter, whatever mode of travel there is at that time, to commute to work. Also, this is part of a broader plan to create a connected side path trail that goes all the way from here, Town Center area. It will run west on University Parkway, past Governor State University, and then connect to the metro station. So this will create an east-west trail that connects University Park's residential area and Town Center to GSU, to Pine Lake Park, to the metro station, and ultimately to the industrial area to the west. So that's what I have in terms of updates. I don't know if there are questions, but I'm happy to stand by for questions. And again, I just want to thank the mayor and the trustees for the opportunity. Okay, there's going to be a Q&amp;A session at the end, so we'll address questions.
Okay, now we're going to talk about our village finances. We'll bring up our CPA that works a lot with us, that has helped us greatly get our books up to date. This is John Kasperic.
Good morning. I had no idea we were going to be outside, but I'm glad I had this hat in the car. So, Mayor, and those trustees, Bernice Dean, and of course, the public out here, thank you for attending, first of all. It's good to see that there's people interested in University Park. My name's John Kasperic. I'm the managing partner of John Kasperic Company, Inc. We are a CPA firm that specializes exclusively in governmental entities, school districts, park districts, municipalities, townships. And therefore, well, I shouldn't say therefore, but when Mayor Rudes was elected, I was asked to come in and help out and take, not take over, but help assist in getting the finances brought up to date. brought up to date. At the time of the election in 18, the audits were only completed through 15, and all of the books weren't 100% updated with all of the accounting records. So, our challenge has been to get those books and records caught up, not only for the audited financial statements, but for the several TIF districts that we have, because those also have financial reporting that have to be filed with the controller of the state of Illinois. I'm happy to announce that since we started this project, we've got 15, 16, 17, or excuse me, didn't do 15, 16, 17, and 18 audits have been done, filed with the state. And I don't know if Ernestine, you know, we got, I'm not the auditors, by the way, there's another auditing firm, and we just got the audit report this week for 19. So, we do the review of the report before it actually goes out as a final. So, the intention is we will have the 19 audit done before the end of this month. The TIF districts, the TIF districts, we have now filed all the TIF reports through 2018. They've now been filed with the controller's office, and we're going to work on 19. We don't do the TIF reports until after the audits are completed, because you have to have the auditor's opinion in there, so we have to wait until the audit is done. But in addition to that, we have all the accounting records caught up. We are caught up through the end of April 30th, 2021. We're in the process of processing and making sure we're done with the month of May of 2021. These are important elements for the board, because the board then will get this set of financial statements that will allow them to look at, where are we financially? What do we have available in revenue coming in? What kind of expenditures? When you put the budget together and you're estimating revenues and you're estimating your expenses, that's not the end when the budget passes. Then you have to keep monitoring it month after month, so it's important that the financial statements are updated all the time. And I know when we came in, there were no updated financial statements. So, the prior administration, at least for a few years, was operating in the dark, because they wouldn't have had monthly financial statements that had all of the pertinent information, all of the revenues and all the expenditures recorded. So, happy to say that we finally got to that level. Took us a while, because you can't do the, we couldn't start on 20 or 21 until we got 16 done. So, when you're working on the records, I got 16 done, then I got 17 done, 18 done, 19 done, not in 20, now we're at 21. So, the good news is all of that is updated, and of course, there's other miscellaneous projects I do work with the village, with the mayor and with the village manager. And I think that covered, we are getting better. And by the way, there's no winter fund borrowing anymore on the TIFs. That's one of the big problems that wasn't just in one administration, probably accumulation of several administrations in the past. There's, you know, there's a substantial amount of money due to the TIF districts. I can say that, you know, while the reality is it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to repay, there is the, at least it's not accumulating and going higher. So, that's the good news. And when these TIFs do expire, and I think TIF 5 is 25 or 24, that should be, that's going to be like a real little lotto for everybody here, because there's a substantial amount of EAV that has been developed in that TIF 5. And when it gets released to go to the total EAV of the community, you're going to more than double your EAV in that one year. So, that is going to be a huge boom as far as for every, all of the taxing bodies, not just for University Park, because of the TIF district. Oh, okay, EAV is equalized assessed valuation. When you get your tax bills, it show, you know, when you get your second installment of your tax bill, you see what your EAVs are, your equalized assessed valuation. That's when all of the properties together create the total EAV. But when you have a TIF district and the property is building in value, it stays in the TIF district. So, all the taxing bodies, when you create the EAV, and that comes from the schools, the grade schools, the high schools, the college, townships, municipalities, park districts, all of that accumulate to create your total tax bill. Well, that total tax bill right now goes into a TIF district. Of course, those TIF district funds then are used to help out and develop in the TIF areas. And when they expire, that, the TIF itself, the EAVs, the value of that property now can be shared with all taxing bodies. So, that's going to add a substantial amount. So, instead of that money going into the TIF district, it is now going to be allocated to all of the taxing bodies. And most importantly, besides the village, of course, your schools, grade schools, high school, get a huge windfall of money that will go to them when these TIFs expire. So, as they start expiring here in the mid-20s onward, there's going to be a huge, huge increase. It's going to more than triple the value of the equalized assessed valuation of the village of University Park. Well, like I said, with... All right, well, as I indicated earlier in my speech, I did say that there's a lot of money owed to the TIF, and there is no way to be able to pay that back. It just, the only, no, I said, the TIFs are going to expire. Well, then they expire by law. There's nothing we can say or do. They expire by law, and then they'll go, and which will be, as I said, not looking at that side, but looking at the positive side of, all of that now will go to all of the taxing bodies, which will be a nice economic boom for everybody. So, we are on the... We're on the road, you know, the village board is balancing the budgets better. I mean, we still have our challenges, obviously, because when you do have a budget that is, that was extended far above your financial means, cutting is not always the easiest thing to do, and raising revenues, of course, no one wants to see their revenues raised, you know, their taxes, their fees raised. So, it's difficult to be able to balance both, but the village has been working on getting closer to, we're not at it, but we're getting closer to a balanced budget, at least better than where we were in the past, and hopefully moving forward will get better. All right, thank you.
Excuse me, as we're going to move forward, we, I'm going to, there are four department heads here. There's the police chief, there's the fire chief, there's the IT director, and there's the director of community relations outreach, and we're going to have them to come up in that order, just to give a summary of what's happening this summer, of what's doing, and the current events that are happening. So, Chief Wilson, you want to come on up and start?
And we know, Chief Wilson will address some of the things that we're all concerned about, speeding in residential areas, crime rates, cameras and everything else, community policing, getting more foot patrols in the community. This is our chief, she has a plan.
Hi, I'm going to be brief. Thanks for coming out and supporting the village this morning. Okay, just to go, just to kind of recap on some of the things that we have covered. Okay, we recently hired two new police officers. Two years prior to that, hired two officers. So, we've got a total of four, you know, to add to our force. Very small, but it is growing. Secondly, we got four new squad cars last year. Those are up and going. I think you guys have seen those, the trucks, the F-150s. Okay, we're happy with those. Those are going, which have been really good as far as budgeting and as far as repairs and things that we've had to make. Okay, that has cut down on that tremendously. So, the officers really love those. We're in the process of, or actually, we actually have community policing, but within the department, and that's how we, how the police department operates. But what I want to make sure that we're doing is that every officer on every call responds to the community the way that they need to do that, okay, from a community policing perspective. Okay, so, a lot of that is, like I say, has been in force, but I want to make sure we are now fine tuning and making sure that each, every time an officer responds, that they respond in the appropriate fashion. We want to assist in any community issues, if we can help resolve those, if we can bring closure to disputes and things of that nature, ongoing issues responding to the same location numerous times. We want to try to dig in and find out what the issue is and try to prevent that from happening, so we can continue serving the community, which is from a community policing perspective. And that also contributes to us being proactive and trying to nip some of these things in the bud before they happen. And that really, that also contributes to a lower crime rate. So, if our residents are happy, and then, obviously, then we're doing a better job, and I want to make sure that we're doing that. All those little bitty things, dogs running at large, tickets, things of that nature, issues with your neighbors and things like that, if you call and make sure that when the officer responds, that you're talking to them and speaking to them, letting them know what's going on, then maybe we can help with resolving some of those long-term issues. Okay, if anybody has any questions or anything, like I said, just a brief overview, I'm sorry, as the mayor was stating too, okay, the, as we get more officers, we are going to be implementing some of the other things that we had done in the past. You know, the only reason why those things aren't going on now is because of manpower issues. But hopefully, in the near future, we will be, and we will give notice as far as the village stickers and things of that nature. I want to remind everybody about their pets, keeping your dogs, making sure that your dogs and cats are registered with the village, have their shots, and they're not running at large. They have to have all of their tags and so forth. You should have a little bag with you when you're walking, you know, to clean up whatever the dog leaves and all that. Okay, if not, then the officers will come and address that issue. The truck's going up and forth down the parkway, can't have that, and anywhere in the residential area, even if it's on your private property, you cannot park the tractors over there. So, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. You can get a list of our ordinances on the village website, or you can give us a call, and we can tell you what the updated version, if there is one is. If anybody has any questions, then I'll be happy to take them. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do that all at once. My apologies.
Who I failed to announce, and I'm looking right at him, is the director of Public Works, Mr. Darrell Byther is here, and then Niva Jenkins, who's our communications specialist, TV, Facebook, all of that stuff, will also be making their reports. So, they'll just come up. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Good morning, residents, village officials, and visitors. I'm director of Public Works, Darrell Byther, for the village University Park. As you have seen over the past few years, the village is in the process of trying to make a lot of wrongs that were done in the past, we're in the process of trying to make those right. As far as the Department of Public Works from Village University Park, my staff is short, as we know. As residents, if you can just bear with me, I meet the village manager and the board, we are working vigorously to try to get us some help in here. It is a process. And believe me, if anybody wants some help, it's me, because I don't mind getting out there, getting dirty and sweaty, for what I love, and I love people. And so, my thing is, is we need some assistance from you residents as far as on garbage day. We are asking, actually, it's an ordinance, that your garbage cans shouldn't be out until the day of garbage pickup. And then they have to be, you have to have them in by the end of the day of garbage picking. That's where we've been running into a lot of problems, where the weather may, it may be raining, we may have a windstorm, and if you leave your garbage cans out and there's garbage in there, it's going to blow into the streets or into the parkway. So, we are working to get those things done, but just be patient with us. I do know in late August, early September, we will start cutting down trees. You can't necessarily, it's not good to cut them down when the weather's like this. You want to wait till mainly to the end of the season, unless, unless it is an emergency. Unless it's an emergency, then we'll save them till the end of the season. Also, I would like to thank the residents in advance. If you see somebody throwing something or doing something they're not supposed to be doing, or dumping somewhere that they shouldn't be dumping, please say something, because, because... Absolutely. If you get a license plate and we get a conviction, it's a $500 reward. So, it is, it is some, it is some pluses to seeing something, saying something. Not trying to say I want everybody to be a snitch, but in order for the community to look better, we have to work as a unit together.
That's right.
And that will be all my remarks for today. One thing I can say, just be patient with us, keep us in your prayers, and keep God first.
All right, now, we'll bring our fire chief, Chief Chelios, and it is our desire to ensure that the fire department is not a standalone department, because we're going to make sure they're engaged as well with the community as everybody else. So, Chief Chelios will come up and give you a brief presentation.
Good morning, everyone. I know all of us, probably by now, are a little bit fed up with hearing about it, but I have to give a quick update on coronavirus. Last time I was here to discuss this with everyone was back in September of last year, and we had, we had at that time 200 cases in the village. As of the last report provided to the board last week, we were at 643, which is not bad considering, you know, that's over a nine-month period. As of June 2nd, however, we only had one new case reported in the village in like the last 10 days, which is absolutely outstanding. So, it's just one of many signs that indicate the vaccines are working. I hope everyone has had that opportunity, because they are safe and they do work. If you still need help with obtaining a vaccine, all you have to do is contact the Will County Health Department. They can get you in line with making appointments and even providing transportation if that is an issue for some. Will County does have their will ride program that is available to residents in University Park if it's needed. So, as of yesterday, the state of Illinois entered Phase 5, which is Illinois Restored, which means all restrictions have been removed and all segments of the economy are going to be fully open. So, we are got, we have now gotten back to where we were about this time last year, with case counts being down and positivity rates being low. So, as we transition from summer into this fall and winter, we are hoping that this time around, it'll stay that way, because over 11 million people now in Illinois have gotten at least one dose of their vaccine, and we're coming up on nearly 6 million people that are fully vaccinated, which is great. So, two quick things for the summertime months. I want to remind everyone that Section 835 of the village code prohibits the use of fireworks displays in the village. The only ones allowed to perform any type of fireworks displays are those that are licensed as pyrotechnic operators by the Illinois State Fire Marshal. They obtain their licensing, they provide proof of insurance and liability coverage to the village before they would ever be issued a permit to operate a show. So, recently, there was a small display that took place at Faith Movers Church as part of their celebration ceremony. That display was verified and authorized by myself, and it was permitted, so they followed all the steps the right way. They had their site plan laid out with safety in mind, and everything worked out well. Last point, open burning in the village. Chapter 1060 of the village code specifically states, "No person shall engage in open burning of refuse of any kind." So, in terms of this ordinance, what we mean by refuse is no garbage, no construction debris, no yard waste, or no liquid or chemical cancerous substance of any kind shall be burned in the village. This does not apply to fire pits, okay? Fire pits, you know, in design... Fire pits, you know, in designed burning areas in backyards can be used to burn firewood for campfires and bonfires during the summer. We'd recommend that fire pits be kept at least 10 feet away from any structures, fences, or trees. And we advise if you're going to have a campfire in your backyard to have a garden hose or a bucket of water standing by in case that fire gets a little bit bigger than you anticipated. And then one more thing too is before you go in for the evening or leave home for any reason, you want to make sure that that fire pit is fully extinguished before you leave it unattended. So fireworks is, is worth repeating because we've already had one fireworks injury occur in this village, and it occurred last month. It was very unfortunate, but it did happen. And even when used properly, fireworks are still dangerous and they can cause rather extensive injuries. So we hope everyone enjoys the summer, be safe, and remember to, please remember to dial 911 for emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Jenkins, do you have, would you come on up briefly?
Want to take a picture? Yes.
My name is Neva Jenkins. I handle the village communications, which involves the cable studio, our social media, and our website. It's responsibility to push information to our residents, things going on in the community, as well as push our information out to the residents. So the, our cable station shows our board meetings and everything. Usually, we put the current board meeting and the meeting before that every week, and it's on Channel 4. So if you are not a Comcast customer, you cannot see Channel 4 from the cable station aspect. In order to see what's going on, all of the same stories that are on our cable channel are on our YouTube channel, and that is digital. YouTube channel can be accessed by your phone or on your desktop computer 24 hours a day. And that is WUPC-TV, Channel 4 in University Park. There is another UPC-TV that is not in University Park. One of the top things, concerns that have been happening as it relates to my position is the website. I've gotten a lot of people feedback saying that they're having problems navigating the website. They can't find anything. Usually, the website, you scroll down, there is, it's a very long website. It's not just the page you see. You take it and you scroll down, there are menu navigations at the top, menu navigations in the middle, and menu navigations in the blue boxes at the bottom. Usually in a situation like this for the town hall meeting, it will be on our Facebook, it will be on the website, the flyer will be on the website. There really should be no reason that residents are not able to access information, registration pages for garage sales and bookbag events and things of that nature. If so, I am always accessible to handle those concerns. We don't, I don't access ComEd's website every day. Sometimes I go on Exelon, sometimes I go on ComEd. I just want to pay my bill. So if you have issues concerning that, the cable station number is 708-3211. The number again is 708-3211. I can also be reached by text message or phone on my cellular device, work cellular device, it's 708-921-4383. I am most happy to train anyone who has a problem in finding information. The whole point is for us to be paperless and digital, and that is the market that I'm trying to hit. So if it just takes simple training or just maybe overlooking, if I need to do it better, please contact that number, okay? Have a great day.
Thank you much.
Very quickly, Attorney Nina Fane is the attorney the village hired to monitor and handle legally with the water suit, even though the Attorney General is in fact involved. She is on that call with Trustee Brooks, myself, so, and Ms. Grayson. But very briefly to tell you that what a lot of folk don't know, they're saying that 88% of water sampling has been completed in the village. Let me just say to you, the 88% is based on the test group. There are 1,500 homes that was on the do not use. The lead advisor was 1,500, and their, their test group is only 60. So there's a problem there. So we're asking, they're saying 88% of 60 have, have shown to be okay. So some citizens have been concerned, well, what about the other 1,400 and something? And that's what we're dealing with. What I'm going to suggest you do, if you have a pencil or pen, write this down. If you are wanting your home sampling, call 877-987-2782. That will schedule an in-home sampling of your water. Now, you may not, no, that's with Aqua. That's with Aqua.
Is it free of charge?
Yes, it is. It's free of charge.
Can you repeat that number?
Okay? You call and get your water samples. Also, I want to mention that we have yet to receive the last update from IEPA. That is what we, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. That's, we, we have yet to receive the results of that. Aqua asked that as the earlier part of the first quarter of this year, 2021, they asked to modify the obligations to the village. They did not want to do all the things that they initially agreed to do for the village. So they asked for, went in and legally tried to ask for a modification. In other words, they don't want to do what you want to do, but they want to do what they want to do. The, they said that this motion was subject to ongoing discovery. So we haven't, in fact, they didn't rule, and the next hearing is June 30th. Let me just say that we're trying to make sure there was a discussion and it's going to be planned, that we want as many people as possible in the 1,500 or otherwise that feel they have lead issues. We're going to set it up, we're going to call it a Water Day. We want to set it up where individuals can come, bring their actual samples of water and can be tested on-site. We're working on that, but we have to independently go through the board, develop a company that can do that, and have the, the actual containers for you to draw your water from. So I just want to say, in terms of myself, the staff is all a part of this working order of the village. I very much appreciate staff. We have our regular staff meetings, we have a very good staff, and I really appreciate them because I can't say "I" because as I, we will say, there's not an "I" in team. It's a team. And I want to support and congratulate all the department heads for all the work that they do, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just would like to follow up with a few more points about Aqua. So the current state of Aqua, Aqua sends out a lot of public relations emails and messages and texts and even mails to our door. So what's going on now, according to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, before Aqua can, before we can go back to full usage, and when I say full usage of the water, that means without running for two minutes, without filtering it to your water, without a faucet filter on your filter. So what's going on now, there has to be two consecutive six-month trial periods when the water comes back that meets the standards of the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. So far, they have passed the six months on the first quarter. It has passed, it's barely the minimum, but the law doesn't care if it's barely the minimum or it exceeds the minimum a lot. But right now, it's barely the minimum, but it did pass the first water quality test in the first six-month trial period. Now today, we are in our second month of the second six-month trial period, which will end on June 30th of 2021. And we have been petitioning IEPA to see what the status will look like. So what Aqua's trying to do, they're trying to petition IEPA, so if the water quality reports come back fine in the second six-month period, it's a great possibility that Aqua will discontinue distributing water. We will not have to run our water for two minutes, and we should not have to use filter faucets on our faucets. I'm not satisfied with that. We're going to petition them, ask them for another six-month extension, but that's not in our decision. And unfortunately, Aqua is a privately owned water company that acquired the water rights from University Park in the 70s. It was then known as Consumer Illinois Water. Somewhere down the line, they transferred to Aqua Water. So right now, I'm in a bad situation because all of us are in a bad situation because we should have choices when it comes to our water. Right now, Aqua is a private water company and gives us no other opportunities or choices because they own our sewage systems, they own our water lines, and our complete infrastructure. There's an opportunity for us to buy them out, it's probably $100 million, but there are other opportunities that we have to just explore. But the main concern right now is that we make sure that Aqua delivers clean, fresh, and healthy drinking water. There's some things going on in Springfield. We're waiting on the governor to sign a lead pipe bill, which I pray will help University Park. The lead pipe bill was passed last week by the, by the Senate and the House, so it's waiting on the signature from the governor. I estimate that we probably need $15 million or so for the village of University Park. If our 1,500 homes, say the average home on the pipe replacement, say between $10,000, some could be a little more, some could be less, depending on our square footage, but that's what our hopes are. Because Aqua has turned the whole thing around. They completely has done something wrong, and now they're going to put it on the homeowner's bill. So what the 1,500 homes are, all the homes that were built between 1973, 1986, or 87, when lead solder was a permissible tool to join water pipes together. Since then, lead solder is no longer a permissible tool, and everything has gone to PVC. So the homes that are not affected are homes that were built after 86, 87, somewhere in that timeframe when that law passed. So just to let you guys know, we're in constant conversation. One of my trustees and the village manager are on the Aqua calls daily on the, every Thursday. Now those calls have been discontinued for every two weeks, and now it's going to be basically an attorney, attorney privilege. So just to let you know, Aqua is a $671 billion company traded nationally on the stock exchange, and they are all over the world. So it will be extremely challenging and hard for us to fight them that, that way. So what we're asking for and we're going to stand for is to ensure that they deliver us clean, fresh, healthy drinking water. But now after that's over, I feel like, and I'm sure everyone in this community feels like, what are you going to do for us now since you breached our water system? So this is what we're asking Aqua to do. We're asking Aqua to find funding mechanisms to replace the pipe in these individual homes, 1,500 homes. We're asking for an endowment fund. And what that endowment fund will do is it will set up some large cash escrow. So if case, some little kid nowadays that's six or seven years old is fine, but five years down the line, there's some learning disabilities or some challenges come up, that there's an endowment fund that will take care of these medical expenses. That's what we're asking for. One of the other things that is really going to be hard to do is to T-R-U-S-T, is to trust Aqua with our water supply. So we're asking them to be a community partner, come in and show us that you don't just care about the money that we pay with that stupid surcharge and this sewage stuff that we all this, this grunled with. So we're asking them not for the money for lead pipe replacement, the endowment fund, we're going to ask for quality water samplings, actual water quarterly, we're going to ask for annual hydrant flushing, we're going to ask them to make an investment in our community and restore our Hickock and Aquatic Center, not just to restore and rebuild it, but also to manage it and fund it for those three or four months out of the year that it's open. And that would be a good step toward getting the community somewhat trust back. I don't think we'll ever trust them fully, but they have to put a foot forward to show that they're actually trying to do better by us and the community. So that's pretty much the long and short of it with Aqua. And if there are any other questions when we go to Q and A, I'll be glad to answer them, so will our manager and anyone else. Mr. Bolton was here, and the manager wanted Mr. Bolton to come up for a second and just speak about, Mr. Bolton wants our IT, he'll talk about cybersecurity and all the things in space and the cloud that can do us bad. So Mr. Bolton, come on up. Come on up the stairs, I can tell me, Doc. You know, people just don't understand on what a complex world IT is. It's almost like fighting an invisible army. Mr. Bolton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Darryl Bolton. I'm the IT person of the village. My job is to provide technical services for all the departments so they can provide the services for all of the village's employees. One of the things that we're trying to work on are improving our remote access. The pandemic made it very challenging to do day-to-day operations, but we were able to keep the village moving. We're looking to improve all of our, our point of, our point-of-sale systems at the golf course. We're looking at improving our, our servers and our switches so we can have our, our police and our fire, our finance provide service in a more efficient way. In terms of what you see every day with the ransomware and the spyware, I'm sure you get it even on your personal accounts. This is something that is, is almost more important than when you see the FBI looking into these situations. So we're working with the village staff, we're working with the department heads, with the manager, and putting together a, a plan of action to secure our data. Thank you, sir. It's very, very important. Spyware, those are things that affect you for a lifetime. So we're working on that, putting together a protection plan with the help of the mayor, the manager, and all our department heads. So in a nutshell, I don't want to keep you out here, I know you all are hot. I am the person that's trying to keep the network going and keep it secure. Got any questions, just reach out to the village manager, and hopefully you all are enjoying the rest of your day. Thank you.
Okay. We'll open up the question and answer series, and we can keep on. Mr. Wesley. Yes, sir.
I just want to applaud you guys and give you all the praise. We all love us. We've been out here, God knows how long, ever since the village started. So we just want to give you praise that somebody loves us, somebody cares enough to get out here. Public Works, I praise you. In the winter, when it was snow on the ground, they never stopped. And right now, the grass is growing, and you look at it, it looks like it's a well-kept village. And we just want to applaud you guys and give you all the praise, and our prayers will be with you. So thank you. One more question. Carvana is a new concept, and I don't understand the full operation of Carvana. I've seen them in Oakbrook, off of Butterfield Road there. So I would just like to know that. And our chief of police, isn't she a local girl?
Yes, she is.
That's what I thought. So God bless you. God bless you with all the praise. Because it's a complex world that we live in, and we're a small micro cousin to the original deal of all the politics and all the governmental fundamentals and all the other things that go on in our world. So, and this village has survived. That's what I want to say too. This village has survived from its inception, from the very beginning, and people have put forth a great effort to help it. And people have put forth a great effort to help it to survive because we have a lot to offer. We have trails here, we have exercise trails, we have many, 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 many things. And like I said, as a longtime resident and participant in some of the governmental policies and things of that nature, I applaud. Thank you.
And what Carvana is going to be bringing here in University Park is their largest in the nation inspectional service complex here in University Park. So and if you understand government, our dealership is the largest amount of taxes any municipality can bring. And the whole goal is why we strive so hard for economic development is to drive our taxes down and take the burden off the taxpayers. And with a particular thing like that, it was my goal, this order for us, we wanted to make sure that if we make sure. So we want to make sure that the whole goal is to rebate a check. Justin, the whole, the whole goal is to rebate our residents back with a tax check in the long run. That's why we work extremely hard for economic development because those are the mechanisms that help lower the taxes for everybody. Next question. All right, one second, ma'am. This young lady, then that young lady, then this Miss Greer, then we go to that young lady, then Mrs. Morgan. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm from University Park.
I can't really hear you, so speak a little louder, please, Senovia.
Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Senovia Reynolds Parks and I am a daughter of University Park. I grew up here. So my first question is about the job because your population of people have said you have more retirees than you qualify sometimes applicants. I'm sure some of them are not going to be able to do it. Both of you have done high school and all of them, but your community is middle income. People would agree, we can't get into Amazon. Trust me, I applaud. And I know we supply this street, getting to Amazon. So what do I have? So do you give some of the rare things for those conditions that are coming into our community? So we can't just give it a worse way to live.
Good question.
Ma'am, every person that has followed this procedure, we're directly working with an individual. We call her the community outreach person that Amazon nationally has assigned to University Park. Every day when I send her, send individuals links, they go, they apply right there. Every single one of the individual that has come through the village's process has been hired. In fact, as of yesterday, one individual had, we had put him through, we had, then we called it preferential hiring where people were making applications. We've been trying to get applications for over a year. Out of over a year, we only received one hundred and two applications. So we had to transform those applications to online solicitors because that's the only way Amazon is accepting employees. So I am given a direct link. So if you want and you have people, I will give you the link and you can give it to whoever you want to. They will get hired. Every person we have referred has gotten hired. They will get hired. In fact, as I was saying, they're trying to promote them even without completing the training. So that is not totally, so I will help you. Tell what the, oh, I'm going to send you the leak. If I send you the leak, all you have to do is punch it. Oh, no, there's no, okay, hold on.
It's on the village website.
I don't use, I make copias, don't miss. If you know what the word means. Thank you very much. Okay, ma'am, let me give you this. It's in my website. What I will do is having to pull this up, but I can give it to you to go and see this. I'll give it to you and it is a specific leak to it. It's on here and it's dark and I do that, but I'll give it to you. I want, believe me, we are as aggressive as you are to make sure University Park people get hired. Period.
All right, young lady in the back. Satire?
Yes.
Wow. Good morning.
Good morning.
I can't move around, so speak a little louder, please. Use your outside voice today.
My concern is for the children, the youth in University Park. I'm concerned that we are not investing enough in our young people to cause them to want to come back to University Park and make their investments. Here's what has to happen. We, if you don't put anything in, you don't get anything out. And that's just a life principle. So if we don't invest anything in our youth, if every summer goes by and we don't have twenty youth that we could offer a job, just twenty. We have to start somewhere. Let's put twenty of our young people to work every summer. That should, that should be no reason why we can't have our young people working in our community. Let's invest in them. Let's let our young people know that they're about more than baseball, football, and basketball. They have some minds. Let's develop those young minds right here in our own community and then they can come back. But if we send them out with nothing, they have nothing to say I want to come back to because we haven't fed into them.
Point, point well taken. And you know, all of our children, my children personally, grew up in the University Park and there was a park and recreation department. Right now, there is not a park and recreation or a park district that's currently existing in University Park. We are going to the polls in 2022 and we're going to ask you guys to support by referendum a park district because we know it has fallen on, it is not falling on deaf ears, but we do need a department that specifically specifies with not just the youth, but with overall program for our seniors and everything. So we're absent and I hear you, Satire, because I believe in the STEM programs and I believe in a variety of other things, but there's so much limited things that the board can do. But we can present legislation that will make sure that we prepare and get those things in place because it does not fall on deaf ears at all. Okay? And I wish you with the creation of the summer jobs.
Right, yeah.
And we're working, and we're working with building our relationships with our business partners in our industrial parks so we can be one big family, not separated by residential and industrial, and be one big family. So we can have opportunities because we got a brand-new I B E W training facility in our industrial park in University Park. We've got a brand-new quick trip coming. So there are other entities in our industrial park that are now interested and engaging with us as far as a community activity. So we're going to work on that, Sisters Lawson. And whatever the people decide, whether it's a park recreation department or a park district, people say that the park district is another taxing body. It's the same thing, just separate because you're going to have to put the same money in a park and recreation department. So let's have a little vision and you guys do the homework on it. And when you go to the poll for that referendum, make the best decision, not just for now, but for the future growth of this community.
Okay, what prevents us from hiring our young people in the summer? Like right now, we, for two months, our young people can work, for two months before schools start back. What is it that's preventing us from hiring some young people? Everybody else in University Park has a job, finding money for themselves. Why can't we find some money for some young people?
Okay.
I mean, it's urgent, like, like do it like right now.
Okay, I give it to you. One second, let me get the other question. Next question. Who else is in the back with another question? Miss Greer? Then Miss Greer, then you, then Miss Morgan.
First of all, why are we outside? The state opened us up and it is stifling out here.
Well, Miss Greer, before the state said that they were going to open up, this town hall was planned. Unfortunately, there was a lot of damage that happened in Ninety Town Center, so it's under construction. So that's the way it plans and I'm sorry because I don't like to be out in the heat either, but we still want to stay until the course and we're trying to get you in and out. That's the only rationale behind this. This was planned months ahead and we had no idea that the COVID cases would be going down, which I'm very glad to.
It's stifling out here. Let me just say, comment for new residents that we used to have and we don't do anymore is a welcome package. Have you guys thought about this?
Trustee Bolton, would you like to respond to that?
Actually, it's good you said that because I was, when I was back there with Barbara McKinley, I was part of that, putting that welcome package together. We are in the process now of doing that again. I saw in the village hall the other day that Keely has been updated, like a directory of all the facilities and all the amenities we have here in University Park. But that is on our agenda, Miss Greer, to bring it back. We all totally agree with that. My daughter has been here for four years and she says, I've never seen nothing like it. I had an old one and I showed it to her and that's what we, you know, need to get back out to the village. I totally agree. I understand.
The other question is, do we have a police and fire commission?
Yes, we do. We have a brand-new police and fire commission, Miss Greer. Professor Roosevelt Martin, Don, are you in the audience somewhere? There's one of the new members. Tyra Brown, former Cook County Sheriff, Sharif Brown, former retired Cook County Sheriff. There is one vacancy left and I understand that you want to talk to me about it, Miss Greer. Yes, we do. Young lady.
Yes, my name is Kathleen Blair. I've been living in the village for around thirty years. My home town is in Blackhawk. There's a whole lot of footholds right there. Our village is supposed to look like this. The streets are dirty. Every time you call Public Works, the machine is broke. I just paid a big tax bill. I have another one due in the April. I don't pay taxes for all the surrounding things and I still don't have a decent job. Drivers and my students are dirty. Paper litter all over the streets. You need to put up signs telling people that they need to charge if the street is littered and your dog says you're not vulgar. People are walking their dog, running their dog, littering the whole street. All those people need to be addressed.
Y'all just let it keep it moving. We're doing good.
Again, we have a building here empty for zero. We get to raise some kids for the young people. These children don't have anywhere to go, exercise, food, no food, no service for them. They can't do anything. They stay in the car, walk in the street, break your window. I mean, it's going to hold change. No. They need a place where children can go and enjoy themselves. You have this building here all against a year. Nothing is done. This can't be done. What is our top selling area? Food and dairy. On the dock, we also need to get things up. We enjoy y'all so like decent streets, clean streets. Hunt people, dogs stop running around and over y'all. Do your job, go around and see what's going on. That was going to jump all over their yard. This village is not being managed anymore.
Thank you. And I would just like to ask everybody, would everyone support a multipurpose facility from the ground up under the parsonage the village owns? And I understand about taxes because I have to pay a lot of these taxes myself. So what you want is you want to get something for your tax dollars and every single resident deserves that. And we're going to make sure that you get the delivery of services that you're paying for. It's been a gap before. It didn't happen just now, but we're not going to point the finger or go back in the rearview mirror. We're going to look forward and move forward and continue improvement. And our public works director will address those things because me too, as a resident and everybody else, wants to make sure that we have a clean and aesthetic-looking village when you come in and go out. Mr. Byther.
Thank you. That was, that's a very good question. And I think I talked to you yesterday, if I'm not mistaken. And as I was talking to you, I was in the sweeper then. And we have been sweeping the streets. I know you stay on Irving or Irving. I know I did get that earlier and it was on schedule to be done within the next week or so. But let's take in consideration, residents, that this is a big village. As we know, as we know, as we know, as we know, I let you guys speak. Let me speak. Let me speak. Okay.
Miss Morgan in you. Those problems won't fall on deaf ears. We'll address those problems. Go ahead, Mrs. Morgan.
I have to say this and I hope that, if I'm being offensive, let me explain to people that may not know I am blood for the month.
Do you have a question?
No, I got space.
To the board. This is question and answers.
Okay, this is question and answer. How come you, as the commissioner, since you want to get down to the questions, how come you, as the commissioner of our liquor, don't have, these people have paid? I got on my phone. I got every snapshot of all the places that have paid for their liquor license, but they don't have. How come over at the golf course, where's the liquor? All that liquor that was there, where's the liquor license? How come that's not being fully utilized? How come over at the golf course, there's no ability to use a credit card? It's cash and carry. What's up with that? What's up with that? I don't want to hear nothing from her. Let me finish saying what I'm saying.
Okay.
You need this village and if you don't do it, we'll find a way. This village needs to get rid of Miss E because she's not doing a good job and you gonna be there.
Miss, Mrs. Morgan, thank you for your comments and your concerns, but we're not here to down-talk on anybody. We're here to uplift each other and move forward.
I am not good. You had Chief Wilson open and shut me down, shut me down. Now I get a chance to speak and you want to shut me out. Oh, hell no. That's what that is. Oh, hell no. Get a question.
But we're not here to talk about, Miss Morgan.
How come? Get a question. For real. Have a seat again.
Come on.
How come there's nothing for our children? I'm on the baseball committee and Miss Robin had to beg this woman just for six hundred dollars. You have paid, you have paid a half a million on this private line and it was just at the drop of a hat. It was nothing planned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for your comments. Come on.
They have held us quiet. They have held us quiet for almost two years. Now we get a chance to talk.
Come on, Cookie.
Give the mic.
Take the mic.
Give her the mic.
I'm here because I'm angry, I'm upset, I'm sad because I've been out here for 41 years. I have not seen any changes that would affect my city. We still, we don't have a way, we have nothing. And Mayor Ruiz, this is not in the spirit of humor. But we need to start at the bottom before we start, we're trying to bring our rings together. Organizations, we need to clean up University Park. We are a diamond in the rough. Just need to clean it up. And I'm very disappointed with my mayor and the stretch fees. My husband had a lot of faith in Mayor Ruiz and I did too at one time, but that faith is kind of gone in a way. I'm just asking we, the residents of University Park, let's get together. We can work with the mayor, but the mayor has to come out and be seen and work with us. We can work with the trustees, but we have to have some type of communication. So it's up to us, we, the people.
We, that's fine.
We, the people of University Park, have to get up off our little hinds and start to do something. I love University Park. Forty-one years I've been here. Haven't seen any changes. And let me, I'm gonna close and say this, there's two things about politicians that I've kind of come to know. One is a politician goes into office and usually it's for to help the community, help that people, build up the community. Second reason is of all the perks, the, the, I mean, as you all know, just look at our president. There are a lot of perks with being a politician. However, you can have the perks and be a politician if you include the community. I thank you for your time. I just wish we would just stick together.
Community zone everywhere, say, "Goodbye."
Thank you, Cookie. I got some questions. Thank you very much.
We can't hear you, ma'am.
Can't hear you, stand here because you won't shut up.
There are several independent lawsuits regarding Aqua Water. There's somebody, a group that represents a large part of University Park residents by the Zimmerman Group. And there are a variety of individuals who are suing themselves. So that option is always open to any resident. It does not have to be wrapped up in a class action suit. Two or three neighbors or two people next door or an individual can continue and move forward with their own litigation with Aqua Water. So to answer your question, there is a class action lawsuit with Aqua by the residents. The attorney general is suing on behalf of the villages for the non-compliance for what they've done to us to breach the water system. And the village is working on litigation and working with the remedy. And what would you call that, Trustee? We're working on a resolution and some dissent decree after this water crisis is over to ensure that we won't have this problem anymore. So Aqua can't back out of it? The dissent decree would give them obligations that they've never had before to this community. Before our arrival, they were able to operate at free will with no restrictions or anything. So now with the things that we're trying to put in place that has to be agreed through by the courts, that there will actually be some documentation and some record and accountability for what they're doing in our community. Right now, they've been operating at a free will, doing what they want, when they want, how they want. And for what you want to know, there's a big problem in Springfield on how we got here with the ICC. There's legislation in Springfield that states that there is no ceiling on public utilities. So Aqua, not just Aqua, any Aqua, Nightcore Gas or ComEd can continuously bill, bill, bill whenever they feel like it because they make their money in the surcharge. So what we would have to do is write to our legislators, petition them and ask them to put a ceiling on it. Right now, they're operating when they want and how they want. So those are some of the challenges that have been going on way before Mayor Ruiz swore in in his office. We're fighting those challenges day in and day out without blaming to anybody, moving forward.
This gentleman right here. Yeah, this gentleman right here.
Okay. Don, then this young lady right here.
You know what, I, I just wanted to make a comment.
Little louder, please.
Maybe ask a question. As far, as far as the people applying for the different jobs and stuff like that, everybody is not computer literate and if they don't have a child or something, a grandson or kid or something, that kind of deters them from trying to apply because they're not familiar with computers and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm just trying to make a comment to whoever someone needed help, you know, with a computer or something like that as far as applying for one of some of these jobs or something like that. If they can maybe get some sort of assistance or some kind of training or something to make them be able to... Because every, every time we say something, we say, "Well, we're gonna send you a link or we fixing this. You gotta go on the website over here," but if you don't know computers, then you, you, you just like lost. You figure there's nothing else you could do and you kind of get deterred from that. And then my, my second question, as far as the water is concerned, I had, I had my neighbor tell me his water was okay because this, this personal survey that they came out and told him, because he had a newer house, that his water was okay. But I'm right across the street from him and my house is newer than his and my water still tested like negative for lead, you know, about positive for lead, whatever. And I was trying to explain to him, they told him that he could no longer be eligible to get water for his household and I still get water for my household. And when I tested my water with the, with the test that they gave us to test the water, it was still testing positive for the lead, even though I had ran my water for 10 minutes or whatever and still tested it. It's still testing positive.
Yeah, I'll split. I'll answer and I'll let the mayor answer the other half, even though I can do it all. Let me just, just mention to you, sir, is that unfortunately, that's the only way Amazon is accepting employment is through online. We had to transform the 102 applications we had to online. That's the only way they're accepting. Now, if you've got somebody that needs to be taught how to do that and can't get anybody, have them to come to village hall, effective as of Monday, which is June 14th. The village hall will be opening full starting at 9:00 a.m. and closing at 5:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. So come in and/or call and we'll set up an appointment with you for that person to come in and make application online. Yes.
This young, come on, young lady. No, no, this is you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm a new resident of University Park. Uh, I truly believe that the only way a village can operate is to.
I don't want to litter. What's in the bag?
So I have a plethora of programs, but I will invite everybody with me today. Um, I'm moving to the village. I have small, four small children, four boys. And I was hoping that there were different programs and some things that make you feel new to the community. Um, the first opportunity that I had was with them in baseball. And initially I was just kind of taken back by the way the program hasn't orchestrated in a ranch. So my question today, which I hope the answer will try to give you an idea of what's going on with these programs is, when they had this baseball program, why was not, why didn't University Park come running funding? Why was there only one village president present? Why did not, why didn't the mayor show up and report? And from my understanding, there were complaints regarding the village being able to offer funds to get this program overrun. And they had a lot of donors and they were very appreciative of that. But it's just disheartening because it appears to be a little bit bad in what people aren't trying to do and what the village wants to happen and what's actually happening in the village and what people cannot do. So that's my question. What happened with the village and the baseball program for the children? Why wasn't there any funding? Why was there a lack of support? And is that what I have to look forward to, uh, as a resident?
No, no, the better, honestly, the better days are ahead. And when I walked into office, there was no existing parking recreation or nothing in place. And the people who run the sports programs right now are independent, non-village, uh, associated like our.
You're doing something for the children.
Like our football program, but we're working, it hasn't fallen on deaf ears. You can't fix everything at the snap of a finger and overnight.
So my question, so what prevents the village from being able to support those programs? That's my question because they said they had no support from the village of University Park, but they have to support for some other local municipalities. So what, what is the disconnect? Why can't the, even though the village may not have a parking rec, why can't they support those programs? Whether it be financially, physically, as mentioned, being present to support, speak to the residents, maybe under, and bridge that gap? That's my question. So there could be something funny. Can the village do other things to support those programs? You want some hope, man, y'all will be in bigger trouble.
I'm, I'm open to some suggestions.
What I got, I just have a question. They're doing so wrong. The village wants to support. It's not doing it all ourselves. So the question I'm thinking to myself is like, is this what I have to look forward to? So what was, what prevented this last program from being successful in getting support from the village? That's the question I want to ask.
COVID had a lot to do with this last program and it is very.
No, no, no.
So anyway, there was, there was some challenges and basically when programs are run by independent organizations within the community, they have their own self-funding mechanism. When I coached here in University Park for like the last 16 years before I got involved in politics, the independent programs raised their money by themselves. They did a variety, they maintained, only thing that the village obligation was to do was to ensure that the fields and everything was clean and manageable. So all these other independent organizations had fundraisers year-round and everything. The village never, ever gave out municipal money to the independent organizations. So, so in the history, so moving forward to today, there is a big need for programs. So it's, we're gonna get these programs. We're gonna get a parking recreation. We want to get programs. And everybody is supportive of people who want to work with our young people. We just can't do it all at one time.
So what I understand you saying, Mayor Ruiz, is that the village is not financially obligated to support these programs? So in a nutshell, if the village is not financially obligated, they may or may not. And that is the end. And that's why they didn't receive whatever financial support and then they said, "Oh, it is fixed apart. We asked them to come mow the grass. You have to pay." Does that mean that you just said the village is obligated to do that part? So what happened then?
So actually, there's a person that was contracted out, as the village does every year, to do certain parcels within the community. And that has been one of the areas that is contracted out. And the local landscaper that does this PTO landscaping, so that's the one that maintains the, uh, facilities in the, in the community. Some of the areas that public works does not do.
Okay, I, I actually thank you for that actual answer because I was trying to figure that out. I wanted to know the answer. I need to know the text book answer as to why these people are making this complaint on why it's not being addressed. You basically just stated that the village is not financially obligated to support these programs. Now, will there be anything that they can do in the future to apply? Maybe for a grant or maybe for funding or proposal or something of that nature? Would that be something that will be advanced?
Absolutely. Listen, listen, I've got seven grandkids that inherit this town from three years to two years old or 20 years old. And I have this, and I have the same concern. That's why I'm not a Band-Aid employee. I'm a permanent fixture. And we need to just get a permanent fixture. We have to make a sacrifice at some time for the long run. Without the sacrifices, we just can't just say do anything all the time. Here's the need, but let's get it done right, okay? That's all. And you know what, and I want to ask some other questions because if anyone has any questions regarding village finances or engineering, let's ask those questions so those guys can go. And Mr. Poe, come on, come here.
And we don't want to hear from the trustees. We can't get no answers from the trustees at any other time. We don't want to hear nothing from the trustees. If I ask the trustees, "What's your name?", I wouldn't believe you. I still want to get in the process.
What's that?
I want to get.
Ma'am, we winding down. Let me say something. I was sitting in that baseball meeting. This is what we're trying to do. We're trying to make the budget where there is $6,000 that make, that any outside entity, because what happened is, what happened is, is that with the finances, that's why parking rent was cut back. We can try to do, we're trying to make it where we can give them a $6,000 towards their program, whether it's baseball or any program, to try to make the, make the program prosper in our village. There is no hidden secrets about it. It's just the matter of the board getting together and we're getting it done and all of us is on a page and the $6,000 is indeed what we're trying to do. And it's reimbursable. That's what we're trying to do. So it's nothing hidden. And we was there also and he was correct. I was there. The grass was cut. And I did, uh, speak with Mrs. Robin. Yes, Ms. Robin, and the thing is. Okay, ma'am, I think, uh.
We're, we're gonna take one last question from Mr. Poe and we're gonna close out.
Close out.
Yeah, Mr. Poe?
Yeah, right.
Ms. Wilson. All right, Mr. Poe, this is gonna be our last question and we're gonna close out. You ain't got what it takes.
They let her do that. They let her be disrespectful. They let her do that.
Speed bumps. Ms. Wilson, we'll see the chief see you after the meeting, Mr. Poe.
Let's close it out. I'm tired of this garbage. Let's close it out.
Very quickly, we have, we have asked for reimbursement for Clorox because they're giving money for rehab there. The reimbursement is so that we can do the facade. This building has been legally 100% occupied. The building over there, it's, you should see inside, it's like night and day. They are totally doing their internal guts. It is a water company. There are no vacancies. There's been so much garbage, deterioration, code violations. Persons can't get the appropriate licenses unless they pass. And that includes what we're leasing. If we don't bring it up to code, we can't lease it. So let me just say, the mancert, as they call it in the industry, you may consider it, is facade. All of this is going to be redone. But because the board requires, we gotta get two procurements, two set of contractors. But we are getting this done, so please understand that this has been done. And very quickly, this money that did this parking lot was not direct village money. The village didn't have it. But the first day I came in office, when people were more favorable, they were telling me the need to have this done. So that became a priority. So what, I was involved with staff, engineers, our accountants. We sought the money. We got this done based on a procurement process. It's like we got to be grateful to what we give. Listen, guys, we have exceeded our time. We're gonna close this meeting. We appreciate you all coming out, but if you have any other questions, by all means, call.
I'm not understanding why we're not in the Zoom meetings when you can't have COVID. You can't spread COVID through a Zoom meeting. But I hear the, the, uh, golf court has.
Ms. Tina, I think the mayor addressed that at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll let the mayor address it. Because he addressed it at the beginning of the meeting. 90 Town Center is in a state of disrepair because of flooding and it's being done.
I thank you guys for coming out today to end our town hall. We thank you for all the positive support because we can only move forward when we speak in one united voice. It's not about personal, it's about the business of the village, so we ask for your continued support. Thank you so much. Stay safe. Enjoy the rest of the summer.